Could you tell on the median, is that we changing it to thirty-eight thousand or it's still twenty-five thousand?
It was unclear.
Did you see the thing, C D C?
No, I can't get it to up for some reason when I try to up it. I wasn't at all.
All right, good evening, everyone. If I can get everybody's attention, please. All right, good evening. Let me call to order this regular business meeting of the Stevensville City Council. It's five-thirty here on Tuesday, December sixth, and welcome, everyone. We've got a reminder outside that it is December. And I just want to welcome, we've got a great crowd tonight. And we've got some folks from the leadership Stevensville class here with us, and want to welcome you joining us tonight. And I know you've got your tour of the city on Thursday, so we're looking forward to seeing you back here and asking us all the questions about what went on when we do that. So anyway, welcome. If y'all would please stand at this time and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Starting to become signs. Okay, before we have our prayer this evening, I've been wanting to say this for a while. I can always hear Brady in my ear, right in step with me, and I know he's got some FFA background. And I want to remind everybody that when you say the pledge, there's no comma between "one nation" and "under God." And so the next time, we can be reminded of that, and I think that's a good flow right into our invocation this evening. So Pastor Grubbs, thanks.
Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious God, thank you for your goodness. Thank you for this wonderful community of which we are all apart. And thank you for these men and women of our city council and our mayor who faithfully come together this evening to plan and to carry out the business of this community. Please give to each one your perfect wisdom and guidance so that as they make plans and decisions, their effort will benefit the entire community. Please give each one a sense of compassion and empathy for the citizens and business owners of Stevensville. We also pray this evening for the first responders in our community that work diligently to keep Stevensville safe. We pray for a hedge of protection around them and our entire community. Lord, we feel fortunate to have such a wonderful place to live, and we know that it's through the hard work and thoughtfulness of each of these men and women that we can say that. We ask you, Lord, through your Holy Spirit, to guide tonight's business. May the decisions tonight be pleasing to you and in the best interest of your people. For it is in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. All right, we start tonight off with the formal part of our agenda on item five, with the citizens' general discussion, and I'll open the floor at this time. Any citizen that would like to come before the council and speak on the topic is welcome to do so at this time. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item six then, which is our finance committee report. And I'll turn the floor over to our finance committee chair, Duxine.
Thank you, Mayor. Walter is going to make a present, where are you? There you are. Going to make a presentation of our quarterly pledge.
No, we're doing the finance committee report, I'm sorry.
All right, excuse me, I'm sorry. I was listening to somebody talk finance committee as well. By the way, I want to ask a question, is this your last city council meeting?
Yes, it is.
I want to say to everybody that Walter has done a wonderful job with City of Stevensville. I personally appreciate your hard work and your cooperation. You've been very helpful, as I've asked questions before and so on that. And I'm the easiest person to get along with, I appreciate your hard work.
Well, thank you, Chair, Chairman Sivin, appreciate that. Finance committee met last Tuesday, and at that time there, we didn't have a full quorum, so we basically made a recommendation to the council for tonight to consider a tax abatement for FMC to forego twenty million dollars' worth of taxable property. And I'm here to answer any questions, any council members. Yes, Mr. Nix?
Do we have, I'm not sure what the right word is, do we have something in writing, perhaps I need to ask it that way, from the other taxing entities about their feelings on this issue?
No, I have not had anything in writing. I understand that we were the last entity that had to approve this before it could be approved. So School District and E wrath County have approved this request.
They have approved it?
Yes, they have approved this request. I have nothing in writing, just verbal.
Okay. Do we need to have something in writing from them, or are they waiting on us to take action before they take formal action?
The way I understand it is, once we do this formal action, I'm going to turn this over to Jerry Lee, and then Jerry Lee is going to give us certified tax rolls for all the entities again. He's going to recertify all the tax rolls and give that to Jennifer.
I'm not necessarily a tax expert, but I've looked at these things more than once, and the certified tax roll is an important document. And when you start amending that document, it has ramifications, not only for the city, but for all the other taxing entities as well, I believe.
That is correct, and I'm sure the ramifications have been taken into consideration before they gave verbal approval to forego this.
Okay.
No, I've taken it into consideration, so.
And that was going to be my next question. Have you taken it into consideration and the impact it's going to have on the city's budget specifically?
Yes, and I discussed that last week in our committee meeting. So I gave options at that time, what you could do, and my recommendation at that time was to wait until mid-year budget and reassess the situation, see what we need to do at that time.
Okay.
It's too early in the game right now.
It's too early or it's too late, one or the other?
Yes, the way you look, it's too early to say what's going to happen at mid-year, and it's too late to go back in and redo our budget.
And rebuild that budget.
And rebuild that budget, that's correct.
Okay. And I would like to also thank you for your service to us as the council.
I will still be here, I will still be here, I'll be helping Monica for the next six months or so, so you'll be seeing me again at council, I guarantee you.
I hope so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Let me make some clarifications, make sure everybody hears the same story. If one entity doesn't approve it, none of them get it approved.
That is correct.
It's a one or all, so even if we passed it tonight and someone else decided not to, then it isn't approved.
That is correct, but I understand.
If we don't have any writing and they don't get it done officially, then it's all taken care of.
For my communication with Jerry Lee, we are the last entity. Once we approve, and I send this to him tomorrow, he's going to go in the process of recertifying all the tax rolls and getting it back to Jennifer.
And when you spoke to Jerry before about the changing the numbers, had they done it correctly earlier on, or before that hearing date, the appeal date, they would have gotten it approved?
Yes, yes, more than likely. According to Jerry, yes, he wouldn't have approached, I don't think he would approach this if he hadn't have, wouldn't have been in full agreement with FMC.
So there's just an issue of timing?
Exactly, it was just a timing issue.
All right, I know we've got representatives from FMC here tonight. I'll just see if the council has any other questions for Walter regarding this issue. I just want to clarify that this is really a technicality that has occurred here. If the one of timing, this is not a relief from taxes, this is a clerical oversight.
That is my understanding, it's a clerical oversight, and all the parties are in agreement. It was a clerical error.
Okay. And the reason it was denied by the board in its review initially was because the consultant that had been hired by FMC was asking for a lot more.
That is my understanding, yes.
It was a single package.
Yes.
And so the single package was turned down, not this specific item, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Okay. Are there any other questions, or anybody feel like they need more information? I'll entertain a motion if not.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution two oh one six R dash two oh, as presented.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Clinton, seconded by Mr. Sivin, to approve resolution twenty sixteen R twenty to accept a corrected certified tax roll value for FMC. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I will be abstaining from any vote that we have here tonight with FMC.
All right, thank you. Please note for the record that Mr. Harrison will be abstaining, he's filed an affidavit of conflict of interest, so noted. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries with the unanimous vote of no abstention, approving resolution twenty sixteen R twenty. I also want to just note and thank you, Chris Moore, the manager from FMC is here tonight with his staff, for your diligence and support in this issue. I also want to share for the public that there's some good things happening at FMC, and corporately, we got word in our previous discussions that there are consolidations that may be coming to Stevensville from elsewhere in the corporation, that just reflects the great, great work of our local team, and I think the way that FMC views our city. And so that's good news all around, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, so that will conclude the finance committee report. Then we'll move on to the type the Economic Development Authority report, and we've got Mr. John Hubbard here. John?
Good evening, council, mayor. I have a short report that I'm going to go in and give you, and then we've got an agenda item that we're going to talk about. Do we have the slides? I think they're, we're going to show that. What I want to go in and do at first is to read our mission statement. I think it's important that we keep that mission statement in front of us, so we know what we're doing, because everything that we want to do in SEDA is driven by this mission statement. And I'm going to go in and read it, and we're going to think about that for just fifteen seconds or so, and then we're going to go in and talk about what our items are for this meeting. The mission of the Stevensville Economic Development Authority is to implement programs that strengthen and diversify the local economy, encourage a vibrant business climate, and continually improve the quality of life for the citizens of Stevensville. So in other words, if it doesn't do those things, we're not going to do it. The board has tasked me with several things to do for this next fiscal year. We're going to go in and talk about that, you can go in and, I guess I can move the slides, can't I? I thought I could. Can you, Jim, could you go in and put the slides up? Okay, so these are some of the things that our vision for the next year, what we're going to do, and we think these, we know that these fit and go in with what our vision is for the next year. Tax incremental financing district, or TIRS, that's going to be an eight to twelve month process. This is a process that will, it's another tool that we can use to grow the city. Foreign trade zones, specifically around the airport. We have a great tool with the airport, and you know that's kind of one of my affinities is the airport, but we're not using this valuable tool to the extent that I believe that we can. That's going to be a twelve to eighteen month process. Facade grant program, we're going to start that in January twenty seventeen. The board has committed fifty thousand dollars to help local businesses, and I think it's important that we take care of the local businesses, to help them with matching funding. Now, some people may ask, and some people have asked me, what does that have to do with economic development? Well, I tell you, it has a lot, because when people look at our community, they want to look at the appearance of our community, and that appearance makes a difference whether businesses decide to locate here or not. The business expansion retention program, as we talked about here with FMC, it's a lot easier to retain a business that's here than to go out and attract a business. So we want to have a business, we want to have a program that we go out and actually visit FMC and other businesses here, to see what their needs are. And also, been working with our state representative, we're going to have a Stevensville Day at the Capitol. It'll be sometime in February or March, we're setting that up, we'll have some more details on that later on. So those are some of the things that we've been tasked with. We're also continually working with, looking at the grocery stores, that was one of the things. Another thing was the entertainment center, we are working on those items right now. But what we're talking about now is, the item that we've got now is a Mr. Mayo's project, and that is a twelve thousand dollar grant, excuse me, I'm going to use a new word, an investment, a twelve thousand dollar investment for a water line on his property. Now let me go in and just tell you a couple of things about that. First of all, let's talk about the twelve thousand dollar and it being an investment. Now, if you would take that twelve thousand dollars and look at that over a period of about ten years, let's just take that for a good number, if we would take that twelve thousand dollars and it would invest it in, say, a money market, we would get about fifteen thousand dollars back if we did that. Now, by investing that fifteen, that twelve thousand dollars in Mr. Mayo's project, we will have a return of fifteen thousand dollars. So right there, we're making money off of this investment. But more than that, what we're doing here, this specifically, is going to be to extend the water line from his project to the city limits. So it does a couple of things for us. One, it increases our infrastructure, so we can put, when the next project comes in, they can tap onto that. And also, I think you've got that in your notes, too, there are five houses on the south end of High Cold Road, Old High Cold Road, they'll be able to tap in on that. It's going to also be used for the building for the new Panopina, did I pronounce that right? Fastenal, excuse me, Fastenal Building, that's going to employ some people that'll be here. And it'll provide fire protection services. So we get all of that, besides the good investment that we'll get for that, we're going to have that as well. And so I recommend approval of it. And I'll be answering any questions you might have on it.
Any questions for Mr. Hubbard?
Can you explain exactly what he's building out there? What's his project?
Well, he's actually going to be building a building for a Fastenal company. It's about, let's see if I've got it here, the exact figures. I think it's about, well, the buildings for, the buildings for the Fastenal, they're relocating from near the airport, and they're moving out to this area. That's just phase one. Phase two, he's going to go on and build a mini storage facility, is the second phase. And so the water line extension will be to that. Now, the thing is about that, Councilman, what he needed was done, but what the city went on and asked him to do is to take it from the end of his project and extend it out to the city limits. He didn't have to do that for his project. His was finished where it was. But this actually helps us as we, for future growth, for us to do that.
So his project will go forward whether we do that or not? Because you said he didn't have to do it for his project.
He doesn't have to do it for that project, but the, our city requires that he go in and extend it out to the end of the, to the city limits. Am I correct on that?
It's to the end of his property line, okay? Which happens to be the city limits.
Right, to the end of his property line, right.
So Fastenal will not be in the city limits, his building that he's building?
No, Fastenal will be in the city limits.
What does Fastenal manufacture?
Now, now, now to show you that he's got skin in the game, that actual project, not counting the building, is about thirty-six thousand dollars. So all we're asking for is one-third of that. Like I said, this again is an investment with that. If we, if SEDA was to take that same twelve thousand dollars, put that in the money market, we would get fifteen thousand dollars. But on this, ten years from now, it's about an eighteen thousand dollar return on our money.
Is there a net gain in jobs on that?
Yes, six, well, just looking at the Fastenal, between six and eight jobs that we had. So yes, ma'am.
Additional jobs to what there are now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Other questions for John? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the economic development grant here at Capitol in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand for water infrastructure improvements.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. Clinton, to approve the grant to E wrath County, E wrath Capitol in the amount not to exceed twelve thousand for water infrastructure improvements. Any discussion? I will proceed to vote. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you, Johnson.
No.
All right. So you voted no? Okay, so the ayes have it, the noes being recorded, Mr. Harrison and Mr. Warren. Motion approved, okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is a new, we introduced this last month, the idea of having a monthly budget report, something that has not been done. And so this is our, truly our first month in looking at real numbers, last month that we just kind of, concept. So we've got Monica.
That's correct, yes. I've been working on the audit for the last four weeks, and so my finance director in training has been handling this budget presentation, so I'm going to turn it over to her.
How's she been doing, Walter?
She's doing great. We've really got lucky, guys, we've really got lucky.
Okay, that's good. Monica.
Mayor, council, before you, you have several reports, and I'm not going to go over each individual line item, it would take way too long, but we did hand out an overall summary, which I will go over that. So for what we have, just so you'll kind of know what to look at, on the first report in the summary, and then the first report that's in detail, we have compared our budget versus our year-to-date actual. So the first column is the budget that you approved for fiscal year sixteen seventeen. The next column is, in this case, it's one-twelfth of it, because we're only one month into it for October, so that's eight percent is what our target should be. And then the next column is the actual revenues and expenditures for October, and then we have our dollar variance, which is either positive or negative, and our percent variance, which is either positive or negative. The items are red, are what we consider to be our undesirable variances. They're not necessarily bad, it's just that, you know, some of our revenues, they don't come in in twelve increments, and some of our expenditures aren't spent in twelve equal increments. So to start off with, in our total revenues, for the budget was twenty-two point nine million. Our eight percent target for October was one million nine hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and four dollars. We're actually received two million ninety-three thousand and nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, so we're actually over by a hundred and seventy-eight thousand and fifty-two dollars. Now, this is comprised of, there was a one-time reimbursement from the landfill to the general fund that was approved, and we did that all as one lump sum, and then the, you're down on the taxes and licenses and fines and forfeitures, because the majority of your receipts on your taxes are quarterly or annually, and then your licenses and permits tend to be a little bit seasonal, and your fines and forfeitures this month was a little bit smaller, assessed fines were paid, than what we would normally see. As far as your expenditures, for the approved budget was twenty-four million. The target budget was two million four thousand four hundred and four dollars. We've actually spent one million nine hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, so we're under our expenditures by fifty thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And this, we had the one-time reimbursement from the landfill to the general fund that made the land feel a little bit over, but we're under on some of the other funds, so it kind of offset. The next report in detail, and in the bottom of the summary, is your prior year-to-date actual versus our current year-to-date actual, so we're going to compare October twenty fifteen versus October twenty sixteen. So as far as your revenue, last October, it was one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty. This year, it's two million ninety-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, so we're up six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. And that's mainly from the one-time reimbursement from landfill. We also had a, for some reason, October of last year, the property taxes were abnormally low, just last year, so I consider that anomaly. For your expenditures, the total expenditures last October were one million three hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. This October was one million nine hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six, so we spent more by six hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars. This is comprised of two things, once again, that one-time reimbursement from landfill to general fund, and then we're spending more because of the street chip seal program, and they also purchased the asphalt paver for the street department. We also have a summary of our new programs, fleet, non-mobile equipment replacement. The items of note is for the additional full-time park maintenance employee in the park department. That position was field, a part-time employee was promoted to full-time as of October third, so we just have about a twelfth of those expenditures have been spent. The trailer with the sixty-gallon sprayer spreader cedar was purchased on October 12th, and then the asphalt paver was purchased October 18th. The administrative assistant in the police department admin was field internally as of October third, and then we've spent some of the K-9 money for the purchase of the dog, the training of the dog and the officer, and some of the equipment has been spent to date for October. The next two reports that we have are on your property tax and your sales and use tax. What we've done is, we have the current plus a little bit of historical information for the last couple of years. So on our property tax for October, we have total received was a hundred and forty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-five, which is split between your general fund and your debt service. But the item of note is that we are over last year by a hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred and fifty-five on our property tax. For your sales and use tax, we've done a similar thing, we have the current plus two fiscal, two prior years. So on the sales tax, the total that we received is five hundred and fifteen thousand and two dollars, and that's split between your general fund and the 4B. Now, last year, the 4B wasn't in existence, so it all went into general fund. But of note, we are forty-eight thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars over last year on our sales tax. Are there any questions?
All right, any questions?
Just want to make sure we clarify, I want to make sure we're clarifying that where we did it, where we talked about the over transfer in the landfill, what that was is from reserves, repaying general administration for services we provided that they didn't have the money before for, so it really wasn't a cost, it was just reallocation.
It's just moving money for one fund, it's an expense, and the other fund, it's a revenue, and it's just moving from one fund to the next. That's all that is.
Any other questions for Monica?
When you say we're over on property tax from last year, are you including the FMC?
This is the money that has actually been paid to the city.
And FMC hadn't actually paid that already?
No, so that has nothing to do with it. Those monies were assessed, those bills would go out in October, so you wouldn't be seeing the money. Most of your money that you receive in October are from your delinquent taxes from previous years.
Based on what you said, the big month we need to look at is toward February, when we get the results of January thirty-one collections, and we'll have better insight into our property tax at that time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, well, listen, I want to thank y'all for the work putting this together. This is a new level of transparency, and I've been able to provide information to the council and to the public that it's really important to realize that the budget shouldn't just be a once-a-year discussion, it's something that we discuss and manage throughout the year, so thank you very much. Okay, so I understand that somebody's leaving us, maybe. So I want to read something. "Whereas we are here today to express our appreciation to Walter G. Wood and honor him for his distinguished career with the city of Stevensville and dedicated service to the residents of Stevensville that spans ten years." Mayor Walter, come up here.
That was embarrassing, man. You're embarrassing me. Turn that one up here, Paul, come on, can't we go get up here and do this?
That's right, that's right. So Walter, I want to say thank you, I won't read the rest of it, because it's really long, but there's a couple of things in here I want to highlight. Walter's leadership in the city of Stevensville has continued to receive a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for Government Finance Officers Association. His fiscal responsibility and work ethic serve as an exceptional example for all city employees. On behalf of the entire city council, I want to express our sincere appreciation to Walter for your loyalty to the city of Stevensville and wish you happiness. for your loyalty to the City of Stevieville, and wish you happiness as you begin an exciting next chapter in your life. Therefore, King Rother, Mayor, City of Stevieville, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Stevieville, do hereby recognize Walter G. Wood for his service to the City of Stevieville.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I want to, I want to give you a music, so you can remember us and set this on our desk somewhere. You know, the, the purpose of Akita City is to recognize someone that's trusted by those citizens, and you've managed our finances with an exceptional level of performance. So just want to give this to you and say thank you.
Appreciate that too. Thank you.
But wait, there's more.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna come and visit you, just make sure that's hanging up. Jury want to make sure you've had that. Alright, now we'll move to the Public Health and Safety Committee report, and Brady Pendleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Back on November eighth, the Public Health and Safety Committee held a meeting with myself and Ms. Trussell. Mr. McClint was absent, but nonetheless, we're able to conduct some business, and we really considered two items at the, that meeting. First item was requests from the Dublin Police Department for donations, specifically being, we had a, have a older Tahoe vehicle that Dublin PD had sent a letter requesting for us to donate that vehicle. That vehicle was appraised by Brutus here in town, and of course, the president came back that that vehicle was worth about ten thousand dollars. And due to the second item, we'll talk about in a second, the recommendation of that committee, the committee was to deny approving that vehicle to Dublin Police Department. It has nothing to do with the fact we don't want to be good neighbors, but going into the second item, it was brought to us, this has been a wish list for quite some time, and I think it kind of compelled a need now, a purchase of a radar trailer. I'm sure you've all seen them down the side of roads in certain neighborhoods. We have the current signs that mount to the poles, but this is actually a trailer that's movable, powered by solar. So we can move around town, hopefully help with traffic enforcement. Hopefully, you're all like me, and try to see how high you can get the number to go. I think it's supposed to try to get the number lower. What do you see? Put your brakes on. So I hope that works. I think it's a good investment for a pretty, pretty small fee, and actually, there's about an offset between the, hopefully the sale of Tahoe and the purchase of the radar device here, and the council or the committee actually recommended at that time that we recommend staff to purchase that trailer, due to the value of the trailer itself. I don't think staff really needed the council approval, but unless, I appreciate them bringing that to our attention as, I think citizens probably have some conversation, discussion about why is there a radar trailer in my neighborhood now? We appreciate staff bringing that forward, but, Mr. Mayor, that concludes our short council or committee meeting we had back on the eighth of November.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Now we'll move to the Public Works Committee and Alan Nick.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on November eighth. Mr. McClint was the only committee member absent, and he thinks he has a legitimate excuse, but I'm gonna question whether that was legitimate or not, but we'll, we'll accept it anyway. The first item on our agenda that evening was the discussion of landfill equipment. We have, for a number of years, maintained our own city landfill, and we have constantly looked for ways to update, upgrade, and extend the life and the service of that landfill to the community. I think it provo, it provides an invaluable service to the community because it offers them an opportunity, literally close to home, to be able to dispose of the construction debris and the things that our type-four landfill will accept. A part of that has been, and we have discussed this for some time also, the desire to have a shredder on-site that will take the debris that comes in, reduce it in size so that it will compact better, and ultimately take up less space in the landfill. Our staff has worked a number of hours, and I'm gonna say test-driven, a number of different pieces of equipment, trying to find one that they think will be the best fit for our use in our landfill with the manpower and the resources that we have available there. Based on their recommendation and based on the evaluations, they came to us with a proposal from Humdinger, or for some Tana equipment. I think that's the right presentation for that. And also, a part of that, we have an opportunity to use some local funding from Texas Bank to fund the purchase of that equipment. Although the committee did not make a recommendation on that, I think the consensus of the committee members that were present that night was that, in an effort to extend the life and the viability of the landfill, it would be a good investment for the landfill to go ahead and purchase this equipment and have it on-site so that we could continue to have it open for the maximum length of time that would be reasonable. And also, as a side note on that, there would be some revenue coming back from recycled metals that we will be able to gather from the incoming stream of waste, and also, if we have the time and the opportunity to literally mine the existing cells and provide that metal out of them as it goes through this equipment. Based on the committee meeting and the work of the staff, I would make the motion that we approve the purchase of the landfill shredder and trommel, and also approve Resolution 2016 R-21 to finance that through Texas Bank with the local funding.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nick, seconded by Mr. McClint, to approve Resolution 2016 R-21 to finance the shredder and trommel screen as presented. Open for discussion?
I don't know if it'd be Alan or, or Nick that answered the question. The duration, the landfill is expected to last about how many years right now?
We expect about twenty years.
About twenty years. If we buy this, what's the potential?
They'll tell you maybe four hundred years. I would tell you that it'll at least double that.
So it'll double, probably forty years.
Yes, sir.
What would it cost us to go someplace else and add some landfill space? Hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Well, millions, millions, not hundreds of thousands.
So, how long would this piece of equipment last?
We treat it like every other piece of landfill equipment, twenty years.
Other questions?
Harris, did you say it cost to buy additional land?
Well, obviously, the price of land varies places that you go, but it's not so much the cost of the land itself as it is the permitting process to open a new facility.
What if you bought a jointed land?
You would still have to amend your permit. It is a state-permitted facility.
How hard would that be?
I really don't know how to answer that. It's, many communities tell you that, that's a, a big roadblock based upon just getting approval from the state. It can take years, even decades, to get approval to build a landfill facility.
Well, am I getting this right? We're buying the side of our shredder just for the sake of keeping our landfill small?
No, we're buying the shredder to extend the life of the existing landfill.
Well, it's the same thing.
No, it's not. Just keeping it small is not the issue, to maintain the use of the current facility because it is permitted.
Keep it, keep from getting it bigger, the landfill bigger.
No, that, it, it's, it's to continue to use the one that we have, because we have it, and it is permitted, rather than go through the process of trying to acquire more property, and then the permitting process to use that.
Well, the money you're talking about here would buy additional property.
Can I have some questions?
And Nick just said he don't know about permitting thing.
And, and it is an unknown, because the permitting process is somewhat at the whims of the state. And when you start that permitting process, you will deal with all of the adjacent landowners in a large area, I believe, surrounding that for their comments and, and questions and, and potential issues that they may raise. Do we need a bigger landfill? Possibly. Can we extend the life of the landfill that we have? Absolutely. And it's far cheaper to do that than it is to try to either expand what we have or go somewhere else and start over again.
Okay, how much money are you talking about?
Well, I don't remember the numbers, jury. It's, uh...
Are you talking about the cost that was said, a hundred and ninety thousand?
Eight hundred and something.
Eight seventy-five is what was budgeted, or... We're looking down over five years, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand per year.
Seven ninety is the cost of the equipment, I believe, in the memo. It will, but the land is not the only issue, and then once you have the land, you have to have the cells constructed, which we found to be very costly, and the engineering to do that is very costly, and we have all that done in the existing facility.
What's the life of it, like it is now?
Well, it's been estimated at twenty to twenty-five years.
It's like it is, the way we're operating now?
Yes, sir. Depending on how many storms we have, because we probably, in the last two years, have used close to seven, or eight years of, of the volume because of the storm damage and the, and what we have received out there.
Well, I'm a, wrong, as far as you're concerned, just, just to keep us even.
I anticipated nothing less.
Other questions for, for Nick?
I'd like to make a comment. My, my position, if you don't mind, my, my position is that I see value in this equipment. However, I do not see it as a priority at this time. I think that seven hundred thousand dollars could be well-spent in other places, and therefore, I will probably vote, vote no against the financing of it. I didn't agree with it going into the budget, and that's what I'm going to do.
And, and a point of clarification, perhaps, that I fail to make, that the landfill fund is an enterprise fund.
I understand that.
And that money, except for that one-time transfer, is not going to come out to go somewhere else, so that money is to be used for the landfill equipment, et cetera, rather than some of the other things that we obviously know we need to do. I don't know that that will change your vote, but I should have made that point clear a while ago, that being a landfill, I mean, being an enterprise fund, the landfill funds itself, and, and the landfill proceeds will fund the debt service on this. It won't come from the general fund.
Okay, that's, that's what I anticipated.
Okay, other, other questions for, for me?
I had a couple of questions. In a memo we got from you here a month or so ago, that we didn't discuss at budget time, is purchasing this equipment is going to require us making a part-time employee a full-time employee? That's what you foresee?
It is not going to require it. I, I think that the, the revenue...
So you can, you can run this equipment with employees you have?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. I think that the revenue that's going to generate is going to show that if you convert that part-time person to a full-time person, that it will generate even more revenue.
But we're not going to have to added employees for this?
No, ma'am. Not at all.
Because the memo I saw seemed to indicate that. And the yearly maintenance cost on this, on this piece of equipment, it's pretty hefty, isn't it? What's the yearly maintenance cost?
I think it's around, you know, I'd have to go back and, and check our figures, but around seventy thousand dollars is our estimate on that. We feel like the, the revenue generated from the savings, i.e. the thirty thousand dollars that we would normally have spent to grind brush, and the twenty thousand dollars that we expect to save on metal recovery, we'll make a huge dent into that. We also expect to save approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in space by assigning a value to our space that we're going to save. That's just on incoming material.
Okay, and something I asked you about during the workshop, I thought we initially budgeted seven hundred and fifty thousand for the, for the shredder, and we didn't discuss a trommel in the initial budget. And so, you were able to get better financing, so you upped the amount to seven ninety thousand. I'd like to see that passed on to the citizens instead of just spending more because we got a better interest rate. Isn't that what happened? We got a better interest rate?
No, ma'am, that's, that's not accurate.
We didn't budget seven hundred and fifty thousand for it in the initial budget. What did we budget, Walter?
We budgeted eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars there. Five payments at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We estimated eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, and we ended up coming in at eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars total.
So it's a little cheaper?
Yes, ma'am.
But that's because of the interest rate?
We budgeted, we, we assumed it with the interest rate, but we actually got a little less.
Okay.
It's eighty-four thousand four hundred under budget.
What is the, what are the reserves right now in the enterprise fund? That fund? We moved, we moved four hundred thousand in, in September, so...
I, I, with the four hundred thousand dollars, that's still about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars in the bank right now since end of September. I could pay cash for this, this thing, my original recommendation.
That's my question. Yeah.
And your original recommendation was to pay cash?
Yeah, we, originally, we wanted to pay cash.
And why did we change our mind?
I'm driving for the lease payments.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna offset the cost of this, partially by metal recovery?
Yes, sir.
Where you gonna sell it?
Eranthorn Metal is, is who we've been speaking with, but there's places all over the state that will take it. And we've been visiting with other places in the metroplex and, and other areas.
Because locally, all you, all you get is an IOU. And you take scrap out there and then they'll let you unload it, and they put an IOU.
What is, what is the revenue potential with this? Or, or even...
Let me, let me just have one at a time, please. Jury, were you, were you...
Okay.
Okay, Brett?
Just, you have a projection of what the revenue potential would be, or, or actual savings from, I understand?
At the, at the committee meeting, I went through a PowerPoint presentation, and went through some of those projections. Again, I'm estimating a hundred and twenty thousand dollars annually in space savings just by shredding the incoming CND material. If we were to shred some of the existing cells, we anticipate, and this is conservatively, five hundred thousand dollars annually in space savings. That is a very conservative number. We expect to save the thirty thousand dollars that we would have been saving, grinding with brush, and I'd have to go back and look at the numbers that we used for scrap metal value, but it's very low. I remember that much exactly. So twenty thousand dollars annually just by shredding the incoming material and selling that at a, a very low rate. If we were to mine some of the existing cells, we would expect to gain another twenty or thirty thousand dollars in addition to that.
Mayor, if I'm...
I think that was three cents per pound.
Real quick, of course, I was on the committee, I mean, I've done the research prior to this, but we've been talking about this shredder for years now, and, and I think it's really a no-brainer. I think this, I'm convinced in the numbers that I've been presented with, and I think the numbers are legitimate, that this is going to save the citizens money, and it's gonna make the city money. I think the landfill has been a moneymaker for the past several years, due to some improvements we've made. We've made some, put some money in the landfill, and in return, we've gotten some money out. It's kind of amazing how that works sometimes, when you invest money and you get money back in return. So I think this is another example, this is gonna make the city money, make landfill profitable, extend the life of the landfill, plus we're getting at a cheaper price than we originally planned for. I think it's a win-win all the way around, in my opinion. So I guess, and hope, if you're willing to entertain a motion, I'll move to approve ordinance number 2016 R-21.
The motion has been made.
We already made a motion. Yeah, I'm aware of that, I guess. We lost it for discussion somewhere along the way.
Then, any other comments that we proceed to, we proceed to vote? I, I will comment before we proceed to vote, that this is, this is an example. You know, people say that you cannot run government like a business, and I say no to that. Yes, you can. And there are elements of the government that you should not run like a business, and that's firing police, where effectiveness is more important than efficiency. But you can run elements of, of government like a business. And the reason we've struggled with this tonight is because we really haven't been presenting a business case for this with an ROI, that we could say the ROI is X. And I think it would benefit the council in future presentations of business decisions like this for us to get something like that. I, I just offer that, not because of the, the discussion here, but moving forward with this for us to do a better job in our decision process. I think it'd be helpful for all of us. And with that, I'll proceed to vote, I'll remind the motion on the floor is to approve Resolution 2016 R-21, financing the shredder and trommel screen as presented. Proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Alright, that motion carries with the ayes have it, the no, the nay votes from Harrison and Warren. And was there... And is there, is that accurate? Okay, so motion carries approving resolution twenty sixteen R twenty-one.
Can I ask one question?
Yep.
If we had the ability to pay it in cash, is there still that option? Is it financing?
I don't see why not.
Get a discount for cash?
I would like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
And that is, if you were running this like a business, you wouldn't do this.
Well, I, I think, I mean, you bring up a good point. I think maybe what we ought to ask from, from Mr. Williams is to, is to bring back a business summary to the council so we can wrap this up, because we're, we're gonna, we're gonna be generating income as a result of this, and we need to know what our business looks like. So I, I think that's a, a very good comment for us to, to task the staff to, to bring us back a, a, you know, business report on this.
Can I comment about this?
Yes, sir.
To me, it's, you know, it's kind of like an depreciation schedule. If I depreciate a piece of property or a piece of equipment, I'm going to go, and we do that so I can set aside funds and go buy something else. To me, it's as instead of depreciation, I'm going to keep, I get longer life out of the same piece of property. So to me, it's, it's worth, it's worth the money to do that. That's the difference.
All right.
And that's what a typical business would do, like you're suggesting.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item B then, Mr. Nix.
Mayor, we, we have been discussing, and in some cases cussing, the East Satyr project for some time. We were, were given a report that night on our meetings and progress from our engineering firm, who are literally designing and drawing up the plans and specs to construct this project. Following some meetings that were held between our staff and their staff, I'm, I'm glad to report that they have been meeting the, the milestones, the report deadlines, those things efficiently and in a timely manner and on time, and they have provided all the information following those things that we have asked them to do. They continue to work on this, they continue to shoot for January thirty-one deadline, I believe, to have everything in our hands and completed. Based on what they have been doing since we had the meeting with them and requested that they be more efficient and more diligent in their services, I think they will probably make that deadline. All of this will coincide with, with what we had intended from them for us to be able to have that in hand and for our staff to review their work, and hopefully, if there are any comments or any additions or modifications that may need to be done, we'll have time to do that. There was no action taken by the committee on that particular subject that night. It was a, a, basically an update, a report, so we would be up to date with what our staff has been doing, dealing with them, and encouraging them to be more prompt with their information that they bring to us.
Let me say that after our meetings, they did increase their staff from two people to six people. So that's why they're closer to scheduling, on schedule for the most recent things, so we're, we're encouraged that they are making good progress. That's why that we're seeing better progress by the way.
Okay, when are the questions? When is the next report coming?
I, I don't have their schedules, Jerry.
Every Monday.
Every Monday. They, they're on a weekly schedule, apparently.
Okay, and they were supposed to have completed this last July.
Let me say, they issued a new schedule saying they could be through by January thirty-first, so that's where we're trying to hold them to now.
Okay.
Yes, they missed, they missed badly, okay, and they, and they acknowledged that, and so, we said, okay.
And this was that seven hundred and one thousand dollar thing, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So.
That's for the design and engineering of the project.
With that kind of money, you'd think it'd be on time a little.
I certainly would have tried to do that if it had been money coming into my pocket, I assure you.
They underestimated their costs, that's what they're telling us, that it's going to cost them more than they thought, okay? And that's why they didn't put as many staff on it initially, but at this point, they need to get it done, and they agree. They're, they're so far behind, so when they gave us a new schedule saying we think we can make this day, we're, we're marking them to that date, from, from here until January thirty-first, but because of other changes, it's not as much a dramatic impact to the project now that we're going to talk about doing something different now in terms of the submission for the, the loan. So I guess you'll talk about that once you, next time we can. But it, basically, we've changed our schedule on how we will get our funding for this project. So we would rather have this engineering firm go ahead and complete it, because it would cost more to bring in a new one than to have them complete their work, and so we'll just keep pushing them to do more and more quickly, and hopefully, it will all come together at the end, and that's the schedule that we think will come together the best and most efficiently.
Okay, Alan, anything else?
No, sir, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to the nominations committee report.
Can we offer comments on that?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, this is a sixteen, anticipated sixteen million dollar project, and, and I, I just would like to know that we have a mandate from the citizens for this project, so it, I'd like to suggest that we put it as a referendum on the May ballot, because I don't want us to be burdened like the citizens were burdened with the Proctor Water Project without a mandate from the citizens for this project, so I just wanted to state that for the record.
Any other comments?
Agreed.
All right, so we'll move to the nominations committee report.
Okay, on November eighth, two thousand and sixteen, the committee is comprised of Jerry Warren, Carla Trussell, and myself. We met. Carla was unavailable, but had offered to be there with FaceTime or Scott. But we rolled through this pretty quick. There's two items that we were looking at. One's considering the approval of annual appointments to citizens and boards and commissions. The other was considering adopting an ordinance two zero one six dash oh one dash fifteen, repealing the Fourth of July Family Fun Fair Committee and the Western Heritage Committee. And the recommendations of the appointments appear in the council packet on page thirty-four and thirty-five. That is a recommendation of committee. Y'all having questions over, over the appointments? If not, it's also the recommendation on item B that we look at, disbanding the, the two committees, the SIG committees. And also, it has been brought to my attention that, that we missed a committee on that, and that is the Water Conservers, uh, Water Conservation Committee. We, that, that is basically inactive, and as far as I know, all, all seats are vacant on that? Is that correct? Something along those lines, okay. But if there's, probably what I think that we, we need to do is make a recommendation on the, the two original ones, and then maybe come back and have a nominations committee meeting here in the near future for the water conservation, and try to handle it that way. That way, we won't have any delay in actually implementing the individuals that need to go in place January one, with the holidays coming up. So that, that concludes the nomination committee report, unless y'all have any other questions.
Any questions? Okay, so we'll need a motion then for the boards and commission nominations.
I make the motion that we approve nominations committee report as shown on thirty-four and thirty-five.
I second.
A motion by Mr. Warren, second by Ms. Trussell, to approve the appointments to citizen boards and commissions as presented on page thirty-four and thirty-five over again. Any discussion?
Kenny, I, I guess I've got a question, and I, I was unable to attend that meeting. I think that meeting was on the fifteenth, perhaps, instead of the eighth, but nevertheless, there's a number of vacancies in, in some of the boards, and I, I wonder if anyone in the community or on the council or staff might have a, an idea on, on how to fill some of these vacancies. There obviously seems to be an inability to take care of that, and Red, I know it's not the committee's fault, because all you can do is act with the applications that you have in hand, but I, it's not something we can deal with tonight, but it might be something that we wanted to work with to try to, to be able to, to fill these vacancies and staff these boards fully, because I know how difficult it is sometimes for, for them to have a quorum and take action on things. And that, that's nothing against the nominations committee, it's just something that we may need to consider to help the nominations committee fill these vacancies.
Could, could I address that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Say, that is something in addition that we, we did discuss, is the possibility of, of trying to solicit, if you will, individuals to try to apply for these committees at any time during the year. If we, if we have someone that applies, we'll be glad to, to try to address that. And something else with the Western Heritage and, and other committees, there might be some individuals off that, that, I mean, obviously, they're willing to serve to some degree, so we might can look at, at some other possibilities with those guys. So all I can say is get involved. If you have any type of interests, you know, get with Cindy, and, and she will go through the proper protocol, and we'll, we'll try to get you on a committee.
Good.
And do some good. But we did, we did discuss that recently, but we'll tell you, we, we did, we did this meeting in twelve minutes.
Yeah.
Twelve minutes, we had this meeting taken care of, so.
I'll never touch that record.
No, I don't think you would. Pretty simplistic.
As, as usual, you're ahead of me, Red.
I don't know about that.
All right, any other questions, discussion, and we proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. I, I do have one suggestion about this for leadership Stevieville crowd tonight. Look under your chair. There's a board position under your chair. Seriously, you're coming back Thursday. We have two openings in the airport board. We have one opening in the Board of Adjust, of Adjustments, and we have one opening in the plumbing board. That's four positions. The airport board has a lot of work going on out there. It'd be a very interesting, especially with what you heard from Mr. Hubbard and the air, the runway extension, a lot of activity related to the city out there, the Board of Adjustments, and sort of like the Supreme Court for runway use. And then, plumbing board, you don't have to have a license, but it would help. So anyway, there you go, trying to help you out.
I appreciate that.
Okay, now, the, the other item, ordinance twenty sixteen oh fifteen, I'll entertain a motion there.
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt ordinance number two zero one six dash oh dash fifteen, repealing the Fourth of July Family Fun Fair Committee and the Western Heritage Committee.
Second.
All right, a motion by Mr. Har, Harrison, second by Ms. Zachary, to approve, adopt ordinance twenty sixteen oh fifteen, repealing the Fourth of July Family Fun Fair Committee and the Western Heritage Committee. Any discussion? Proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. Anything else?
No, that concludes my report.
Okay. I, I want to say one thing about those two committees. The reason that we are able to eliminate those is because there've been some great folks in the community that have stepped up and have taken those two events to a great level, and we need to really thank them, and, and there's nothing better than to have a community initiative to, to have programs like that be the huge success that they are today. And so, we, the council, want to thank those of you that are out there planning today for the Fourth of July, even though it's thirty degrees outside, and for those that are, are leading the effort with our rodeo here each week. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that we remove item D four.
Okay, I'm D four. All right, I'll consider a motion for the consent agenda minus item D four.
May I move that we approve the consent agenda less than the one that's been indicated?
Second.
Okay, a mo, motion by Mr. McClain, second by Ms. Zachary, to approve the consent agenda less item D four. Any discussion? All right, we proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the consent agenda minus item D four is approved. All right, Mr. Nix, D four.
Well, I, I know we've talked about this a couple of times, and the, the medians coming into the city of Stevieville, I believe, are very important to the aesthetics of the city, but they're important to the image that people get from the city or for the city when they come into our town. I'm not sure, the recommendation was at best vague to me, and I wasn't sure which way we needed to go with that, and I thought we might ask Jeremy if he could to help clarify that for us and help understand a little bit more about what we were actually going to do
Okay.
in this particular area, because I think it is important to the city.
Jeremy, want to go a second, please?
It actually gives me a good opportunity to talk about this project a little bit. I think in your agenda packets, we gave you the bid specs that were required, the kind of the design of this. Originally, the project was bid at, I think it came in at like thirty-eight thousand. We originally budgeted twenty-five. So we, we cut the project down to, to meet that, that cost, not that the staff necessarily was, was happy with that recommendation. We were trying to fit with what we were trying to do. I know there were some concerns about what we were cutting, how we were cutting. Just within the last day or two, there was some conversations about some alternative funding and some, some possibly work being done with the county and the sheriff's department, bringing some inmates over to, to help us clean some of those beds out and do some of the work. So with this being up here, I mean, I, I'd be okay with tableing it, so if you guys don't mind, I'm in the will of the council, so we can maybe work out some alternative funding, so we can get to that threshold of that thirty-eight thousand or whatever everybody's happy with. Hey, it's thirty degrees out, we can't plan anything right now, anyway, so I think if we wait a, a month or two to give us a chance to, to get to that level, I think everybody wants it to be, so.
It, it will not create any problems for you or staff or anyone if we delay action on this until January to give you some opportunities to pursue some alternate funding, if, if those prove to be, to be available to be able to do the whole, the whole scope of the project, then.
Hey, it'll make our staff happy. We want it to be, you know, top level. We want it to be a good representation of Stevieville. So if, if that's the will of the council, or we can, you know, go with the recommendation and do a little bit less on the project, and, which, it wouldn't be my recommendation at this point, with, with what's came through in the last day or two about some alternate funding opportunities.
Okay. Mayor, I would offer a motion to table this item and bring it back to the council in January to give Jeremy an opportunity to pursue some alternate funding and options for us to consider at that time.
Second.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Nix, second by Ms. Trussell, to table item D four. Any discussion? Not, we'll vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we'll table that, D four. Just ask the council to bring it back, or staff to bring it back to the council. At future date. All right, we'll move on to the comments by the city administrator.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to talk about, when I first had the interviews with the council, one of the things that we were all in agreement with, I felt like, is that we need to promote Stevieville more. We have a lot of great assets here, we, you know, that we need to get a methodology that we can promote Stevieville and tell people how great it is, as we're talking to people, maybe bringing in businesses, marketing it throughout the state. One of the ways that you can do that is a company called CGI Communications. It is a company that does videos for cities. They're part of the mayor, the mayor's association. They're associated with them. They go all over the U.S. doing these kind of things. And that is to no cost to the city, and so you say, well then, how do these people make money? Well, they make a lot of money, because what they do is we give them the right for our citizens to put, because we're on Google, on Google, now we get put in a priority situation. Anybody who Googles Stevieville gets, our website, official website goes up to the top of the list. They can, some people can buy something a little bit higher, you know, it's all about money, but we're up there in those top areas of any search, and so-
And so our citizens could also buy a video or pay for a video about their company to, for people who are interested in Stevensville, so that they could show, you know, their product and their, and their business and those kind of things. So that's how they make money. They make money, but it's not at the expense of the city. And the product they get, the citizens, the product that they get is, I feel very quality-oriented. In fact, I'm going to show you a video here. This is Cheyenne, Wyoming. This is one of their videos. Can you run that real quick, please?
Hi, I'm Ricky Mason, I serve as the mayor of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming State Capitol. I welcome you to our city, we like to refer ourselves as the community of choice.
Is that as loud as it goes?
Yeah, I'm Ricky Mason, I serve as the mayor of the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming State Capitol. I welcome you to our city, we like to refer ourselves as the community of choice. Cheyenne is named after the great Native American tribe of Cheyenne, and we were founded on July 4th, 1867. At least time we had a population of 400 people. Today, we have a metropolitan population of 74,000 hospitable and friendly people. Although Cheyenne may be considered a small city, we have a large city atmosphere, such as performing arts and many family activities, wonderful youth programs, a great variety of eating, shopping, stuff, exceptional educational and health systems, and a quality of life that is unmatched. We're only minutes away from great outdoor activities, including hiking, biking, fishing and hunting. Snow will be so much more. Cheyenne is also a great place to visit, no corporate effects, no purple effects, overall low operating costs and a workforce that has very strong work ethic. Again, I welcome you to and ask you to join us in Cheyenne, or you too can live the life.
Now, we will receive six videos, okay? It will be the, the welcome. You'll get one on education, which we're very strong in with Torleton. You, you basically espouse your educational opportunities. Real estate is another one, and healthy living is another one. So we, we, those are, those are the kinds of things that we can, and then, then you get two that's whatever you want. Now, we are the cap, you know, cowboy captain of the world, and we could emphasize our world champion cowboys. There's just a lot here that I think can be very well promoted, and so this agreement allows us to do it at no cost to the city. Now, the cost to the citizens, I don't think you have the video of a, of, there is some, some videos that you'd like to come by and, and see a video that has been produced for citizens or for entities within the city, but they're just as high quality. The cost goes from $900 a year to is, for a 30-second that you basically do your own videos, you know, that you could do that, to where they produce. See, they come in, they bring film crews in. What you just saw there didn't just happen, okay? That's a film crew coming in and actually doing the work, okay? And they write the scripts for you, and you could do that for your own business as well and it'll be placed around our video, okay? So they can click on your company as well. It can go as high as $4,000 for a 90 second that's produced by them and script written by them. That's what she said, between $4,000 and $4,500. Now, that's for an annual. If you use the same video, then the next year you just pay the hosting charge, which is about half of that, okay? And this is a three-year agreement. After the three years, we'll renew it again, they'll redo the video. It's just a good deal, okay, for the city. And it's a good deal for our citizens too to be able to get out there and front when people are interested in Stevensville and want to come see the city, and they get to, you know, promote the business. So you have a copy in your paper that shows the agreement. I worked with Randy. He did some addendums on it to make sure that there is no cost to the city, okay? And that we have the right to renew and to do what we need to do in terms of, you looked at the contract, and he's okay with it. So I recommend that we go forward with this contract, and would like some comment from the council.
Hey, Wayne, a quick question on that contract. Is, is any of that conditioned upon them having to secure so many businesses to sign up to produce videos for themselves before we get our video, or how does that work as far as funding from the private?
It's not, it's not conditioned, they don't have many videos.
Assuming nobody signs up with them, produce any videos, and they're still going to do ours?
We win. In fact, they do ours first.
Okay.
Okay. If, in fact, we decide after three years not to go, not to continue, we will get a CD, and we can still use it in all our promotions when we're talking to businesses, whatever we want to do, we'll get our videos on a CD and we can use it.
They just won't host it.
Yeah, they just won't host it.
Okay. Are any other questions for Wayne?
Do you need a motion?
I, I don't think I do. I mean, it's up to you. I mean, do I need, I mean, do you want, do you really need to sign it, Mayor? I mean, it's in, I think you signed the contract.
Okay.
So it'd be a good idea to have a motion.
Let's go ahead and have a motion.
So I'll clear a pane of motion.
I move we enter the contract with CGI presentation, marking, the marking video.
My second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McClain, second by Ms. Trussell, to enter the contract with CGI Communications. Any discussion? Proceed to vote. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimous vote. Wayne, back to you.
Yeah. We are going to close the city hall on, on December, Friday, December 9th, at 12 to 1:00 P.M. Set it up so that all of the employees can go to the Christmas party. I think that's the right thing to do, so just give that notice. December 13th, we're going to schedule a council work session for the thoroughfare plan. This is the time for our five-year update, and we want to get some comment from the council. I was told to say that the, the north loop has been removed. Okay, what was it called? That loop is no longer in it, so we don't feel it's that controversial anymore, so, but there are some changes that we, inside the city that, in terms of collector roads and so forth, so.
The Grinch got it. The Grinch got the north loop.
Yeah, he got it, yeah. So.
You voted for it, and I voted against it.
December 15th, the Holly Jolly Christmas Downtown Plaza from 6 to 9:00 P.M. We're having that committee. I mean, that, that event, the personnel committee meets on December 20th. We have another event planned on the plaza, food trucks and music downtown plaza on December 29th. And the committee for the Conference Center Sports Arena that we, is called Summit, that Joe asked us to pursue, we have a committee that's been meeting now too. We've met twice now, and we have a third one scheduled. We're making progress. All of the participants, the county, the state district, Steadco, SDA, Torleton, so they're all, they're all there, and they're all sitting and looking at this summit because there is interest. We were hoping, well, we were hoping to get done by 45 days, and so we put December 20th out there. With the Christmas time and Torleton being closed, it just wasn't possible to get it all scheduled for all the parties to, and to be in a place, since all of the elected officials are going to be asked to be there, you need to have it open to the public as well. We probably would anyhow, but it needs to be a pretty large area, I think, in case we have a big crowd. So we're going to have it at the Torleton, where they're looking at the facility they think is best for it, but we'll have the meeting at Torleton. And it's going to be on January 10th at 5:30, I believe it's done, 5:30. And so that's the, that's the plan now. Now we're working on the agenda for the meeting. That's what some of our meetings want to be, by that committee. So just to keep you updated on how that's progressing, so.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Wayne? All right, comments from the council. Mark?
Walter? Thank you, sir. Carla?
Tomorrow night, there's an open house at the Berry Cottage from 5:00 to 6:30. The Berry Cottage burned about a year and a half ago, and we've been working on renovations, so I'd invite everybody to come see the new Berry Cottage tomorrow night from 5:00 to 6:30 at Historical Museum. And thank you, Walter.
Walter? I wanted to give you a bonus, but I don't want to break the law at the same time, so sorry.
You talked on record, you talked about speeding now.
Well, don't follow me around that.
Walter, thanks again.
Appreciate it.
I might ask Wayne to investigate the possibility for the meeting at Torleton. If they might not provide one of their shuttle buses, we could park here and ride up there, because I've been told that parking is at a premium in and around the, the Torleton campus.
I will ask. Mr. Nix, I bet I could provide you a shuttle bus as well.
I didn't ask for a party bus, just a shuttle bus. Thank you, Wayne. I appreciate your work on this.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah, Walter, I just wanted to thank you for all the time you've been explaining things for me and introducing me to city politics. Thanks.
All right, sure. Okay. Three quick things. If you haven't heard it in the council chambers, you need to walk outside, and thanks again for the great light show and music that's in the plaza. Just invite citizens to come by and see that. It's a, it's really good addition to the plaza. Secondly, 18 December, 6:00 P.M., Cowboy Church. All the cowboys and cowgirls that have been competing out at the National Finals Rodeo this week in Las Vegas will be there for a reception, so invite everybody to come out. And if y'all can stay up 9 o'clock, and later you can cheer on some Stevensville lights that are competing tonight, so cheer them on. And finally, Walter, thank you very much. You, you've come in here and done an exceptional job, and I just wish you Godspeed in your, in your future, and just thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'm going to call the council into executive session and comply with the provisions of Texas Open Meeting Law, Subchapter D, Sections 55174, 55171A, and 55172, 5510871.
And we're going to talk about everybody, that's right.